I Hate Politics is a podcast about a human activity we love to hate. And this is the I Hate Politics candidate interviews with Marissa Valeri, Adam Van Grak, Isola Shaw, Paul Scott, and Kate Fulton, all candidates for the Rockville City Council. I'm Sunil Dasgupta, host of I Hate Politics. If you're new to the show, I Hate Politics is a podcast about our neighborhoods, workplaces, schools and streets, and our local governments as they function in diverse, democratic, and sometimes divided societies. As part of the show, we have conversations with local state and sometimes federal candidates. Rather than ask them where they stand on a multitude of issues, these conversations go in depth on a few issues. This week is a double header, two episodes looking at city of Rockville mayor and council races. The episode you're listening to now includes five candidates for city council of Rockville. The accompanying episode includes the mayoral candidates. Rockville elections are scheduled for November 7th. Residents should have received their mail-in ballots already. Having five long form interviews makes for a long episode. The advantage is that you get a head-to-head comparison. But if you want to skip around, look in the show notes for timestamps for each candidate. The interviews appear as I recorded them. There are other candidates in the race, but either they were not available or we didn't think they were viable. Music for this episode comes from a number of local artists and I will mention them as I go along. The music you're listening to now comes from local artist Tom Lewis, who goes by Ro Campbell. And this excerpt is from his composition called Ominous Intro. Marissa Valeri is a former president of Twinbrook Citizens Association, a nonprofit executive, and a former member of Rockville's Charter Review Commission. You can find out more about Marissa Valeri at marissaforcouncil.com. Marissa Valeri, welcome to I Hate Politics.
Thank you. I love to be here.
You said you wanted to talk about pedestrian and road safety. And you're running for the Rockville City Council in the upcoming elections. How would you describe the problem of pedestrian and road safety in the city of Rockville?
Ineffective at best, dire at worst. We have a serious issue that many previous councils, in my opinion, have ignored to the detriment of the residents of Rockville. And in particular, the needs of the many residents that live either on or very close to our major arteries, which are Veers Mill Road and Rockville Pike.
How many people die on streets that are in Rockville? And how many collisions are there? Are those numbers growing, stable?
Through my work with the Rockville Pedestrian Advocacy Committee, which I co-founded with a gentleman named Eric Fulton, I became the de facto data analyst. So I don't have the numbers committed to memory because I'm very bad with numbers sometimes. But we have a circle around us of the highest collision fatality series injury intersections in the entire county. Some of the major ones along 355, our portion, the Rockville portion of 355 has some of the most dangerous.
Can you identify which intersections you're talking about?
Halpine Road and 355 has seen significant fatalities. I can't even begin to tell you the number of collisions. I can generally tell you that we have not stabilized. We've increased pedestrian and bicyclist collisions at that intersection. Fatalities have somewhat stabilized, but are still significant. And to back it up a little bit, even the fatality numbers are not a true representation of how dangerous an intersection is because our data has a fatal flaw, no pun intended. And that is, it does not track the individuals who unseen are injured, but down the road died due to injuries.
Why is it that previous councils did not do what you, what they said they would do? And that even from 2019, despite having a Vision Zero program, how much has been really done?
Exactly. And there was no reporting mechanism to even hold, you know, here's our plan, here's how much we've gotten done, a dashboard, any sort of accounting to the community. I don't, I'm not privy to what the council members saw.
But isn't that just a matter of mayor and council asking the officials concerned rather than, you know, it doesn't have to be a fancy dashboard, right? You can, you can have the relevant officials come and say, what have you done? And they report back and usually they are fairly responsive to mayor and council, I would imagine.
I have no idea. I really have no idea.
But if you say you don't have any idea, how do you propose to fix it?
I would elevate any sort of Vision Zero coordinator to a higher level decision-making role within the city government. Too often, I believe that there is a tension between the engineers that had the traffic and transportation division of the Department of Public Works and the needs of Vision Zero, which a lot of it is about changing the culture. Most transportation engineers point to, you know, the proverbial big book on their shelf. Well, it says here that this is a standard, so we really can't do more than that. A big example of this is crossing times. There is a weird standard for how many seconds they put on the little blinky walk signal. And other jurisdictions, you see a lot more flexibility.
If that were truly the case, right, that you just had to, you know, alter this one standard, the council could have done it.
I agree.
So why didn't they do it?
Because the, because of that mindset, it's an, it's a-
So the council has the traffic engineering mindset?
They defer to the traffic engineer mindset. So really, our engineers need to keep up with the, the new models of, of transportation planning. They're stuck in this, I'm going to be generous, they're stuck in an eighties mindset and I'm not gonna, I'm not going to stand for it.
But you can't change the traffic engineers, right? What you're changing is the council member. Political leaders with generalized knowledge often lose this contest with experts when they themselves cannot come to an agreement. So if the council acted as a body, then they would be effective. An individual council member is an individual council member. And then division within the council emerges, then what do you do? You resort to expert opinion.
I will say, in the last four years, what I've seen from the dais is not consensus building, it's sniping. It's at times extremely unprofessional and frankly embarrassing as a resident to see.
What's an example of it?
Our last budget season is a great example of that. You saw the worst of some of the elected officials. You saw just being demeaning toward each other, being absolutely demeaning and awful to city staff that were, you know, in those meetings and fielding questions. It was, it was awful, Sunil.
How are you going to change that? I mean, you're talking about human nature.
I think I am an extremely likable person. No, I think that that is part of it. I've spent my entire career essentially on different levels, being a grassroots organizer. And the lesson there is picking up on human nature. And, and, you know, the, it sounds tired, but it's true. When you meet people where they're at, instead of trying to drag them along to where you're at, that's a fundamental of, of organizing. And that's a particular skill set that I believe I truly have.
The city has state roads, the city has county roads, and the city has city roads. As a council member in the city of Rockville, what leverage do you possess? Or can you marshal in order to get the state and the county to do the pedestrian safety changes that you want?
Delegate Julie Palakovich Carr, who has in a very short time, relatively speaking, truly become a, a champion and a trusted legislator in Annapolis. She's a huge Vision Zero supporter. She bicycles everywhere. I love seeing her bicycling her out. So that's on the state level. I would say others too. I'm getting to know our new District 17 member, former city council member Ryan Spiegel from Gay Thursberg. I'm not as familiar. I've been a little busy lately, but, so we have Julie on the state level. On the county level, we have now council president, council member Evan Glass, who we could not ask for a stronger voice on pedestrian and bicyclist safety. He is, again, I don't suck up to anybody, but he's amazing. And he's got, you know, he's got the record to, to prove that. You bring him in the room with delegate Julie Palakovich Carr and the city council members who are also strong on it. I will say that the current mayor is, has been vocally a champion of these issues, and I think she is intrinsically as well. You bring all those individuals into the same room with the head, excuse me, the head of the State Highway Administration. Not only do you do this once, but they're actually doing it right now, which is you bring everyone to the table, including your traffic engineers, your Vision Zero coordinators, and you meet, I think they meet bimonthly, they might meet monthly, don't quote me on this. And they hash these out. And the great thing from the city of Rockville-
How long have they been meeting?
I think they started right before the pandemic hit.
Councilmember Glass, Delegate Palakovich Carr, Mayor Newton have been in place, all of them for some time. And they have been having these meetings from 2018. What is the net result of it?
Well, of course, I'm not going to own other people's political record.
You said you have all these great people coming together now for some time, but without any results. What is your expectation that this is going to change in the future?
It has to be in concert with the other changes. So when we were talking about, you know, having traffic engineers that are not in this state frame of mind, then you have engineers in these meetings who are coming at these things, not from an adversarial place. You know, oh, I'm not sure if we can do that, but you have them as true advocates. We now have a Vision Zero coordinator who wasn't there all along, who is visionary in that way, and you have him in the meetings. The county has a terrific Vision Zero person too. And their mindsets are changing. And so what you're actually changing more is the human nature-
The county has not made almost very little progress on Vision Zero. I mean, I'm not sure that you can hold the county up on that account at all.
I think that's a good point. On the, on the state level, on the state level, I think that having some of these discussions is a different tenor than what you can do solely within the county structure or the city structure. Because you don't have those monetary constraints in the discussion. While there are budgetary challenges, you know, the overall pot of money to make some of these things happen is there so that when you're coming to the table, you don't come in with, well, our budgets have these deficits, so within our own budgets, we can't do any of this. You're coming in saying-
I don't know. I mean, I think Governor Westmore is saying now that Maryland Department of Transportation is not going to have all the money.
I bet you what we end up seeing is the allocation of tax revenue from the legalization of recreational cannabis. Kidding aside, I think it's a legitimate thing, but then that goes back to the grant funding environment, where then you have the feds coming in and they keep opening up these new avenues, reconnecting communities is a big transportation infrastructure.
Does the city have a grant on reconnecting communities?
We are putting in actively.
You're not, you haven't gotten the grant, you're, you're-
Not yet. It's really our only avenue. Because when it comes down to, you know, eh, well, I just don't know if we have the money in the budget. If you're not going to reprioritize and shift your budget priorities.
Shift those budget priorities. I think that's what's necessary and that's what people are unwilling to do.
Yeah. And again, that then goes to the discussion of how do you move, you know, your colleagues who are not in that same mindset of you. We've had way too many memorials in and just outside of Rockville. There was a memorial several months ago for Paul Shin. I believe that was his name over by Shady Grove Hospital. We have literal intersections where we can say, this many people died right here, right? And I guess maybe we need to get more elected officials and budget crunchers to these memorials and let them speak to the families.
Marissa Valeri, thank you for coming on I Hate Politics. Good luck in the campaign.
Thank you so much.
That was Marissa Valeri for Rockville City Council. You can find out more about her at marissaforcouncil.com. I'll be back with Adam Van Grak. Adam Van Grak is a Montgomery County Circuit Court lawyer in Rockville. He's a member of several local civic groups, including the Chamber of Commerce and the Bar Association. But most differently, he was the chair of USA Canoe and Kayak, the official body for whitewater sports within the U.S. Olympic Committee. He himself was an alternate for the U.S. kayak team in the 1990s. You can find out more about him at vangrak.org. Adam Van Grak, welcome to I Hate Politics.
I'm thrilled to be here.
You wanted to talk about the history and the troubles that Rockville Town Center has had. What do you think is the central problem?
So residential density has always been a problem. When they started to build Rockville Town Square and Rockville Town Center, they started at the correct ratio because you have to be building up the retail and commercial space. At the same time, you're building up the residential density. They can't just have a magic wand and have everything up here.
What is that ratio?
I don't know the exact ratio.
So how do you know it's right then?
If you would go on an evening or you'd go on a weekend in around 2005, 2004, Gordon Biersch was packed with people. I would go to Rockville Town Center and there was plenty of people around there. Now, as we built up and created more commercial space and more restaurant space without increasing the density at the same rate, we were now creating a situation-
The question I have is, yes, okay, in 2005, 2006, they had what you said is the right ratio. And then there was more commercial building and not enough residential building. Who made that decision? It's a private developer, federal realty. At that time, it was all federal realty, right? And federal realty, they then would have looked at the residence, residential commercial ratio. And they made a decision to put more commercial than residential. Was it then just federal realty is doing that they brought it down on themselves? They lost a lot of money in, in their, in their investment. And what is even more surprising is that it's the federal realty also owns Pike and Rose, where they got it just exactly right.
Sure. So there has always been in Rockville, and this is going back to the Rockville politics of the 1980s, a conflict among the elected officials and those running for election of those who believe Rockville needs to have growth and development, and those who believe Rockville is growing too quickly and they need to stamp out growth and development. It's been a constant dispute. You see it in the past few elections between Team Rockville and Rockville Forward. And you even see it a little bit today. We had the first candidates forum and you saw between Monique Ashton and Mark Proshela, a conflict in Mark Proshela talking about the need for residential density and the need for growth in Rockville.
You pointed out that Mark Proshela took a pro-growth position. So did Monique Ashton take an anti-growth position, in your view?
Well, yes. And I can point to just even two years ago, in August of 2021, the owner of 110 North Washington Street, which is a red brick office building, said and gave a proposal, because in that area of the zoning restrictions in Maryland, you can only have a, you cannot go above a certain height. And he wanted to actually build residential units at that same location of 110 North Washington that goes up to 75 feet. To do that, you would need an exemption from the Rockville height restrictions within the Rockville zoning. And this is exactly what the 2019 ULI report that you referenced discussed. They even said, the buildings along North Washington Street need to be converted into residential units because we need the residential density and the office space is doing nothing for the assistance of Town Square and Town Center. And the mayor and council voted against it on a four to one vote. Mark Proshela was the only member of the mayor and council that voted to move forward with this proposal and Monique Ashton and Bridget Newton voted against it.
Have you ever talked to federal realty about that decision?
No, I, I've not. So I don't know their basis in continuing with the commercial retail with, without the, the residential components. Now, I want to be clear, residential density is not the only problem with this area.
Okay, what else is a problem?
The 2019 Urban Land Institute, they talk about the roads leading in and around Rockville Town Center. When you come in from East Montgomery and you kind of look as if you're coming into the courthouse, you make a left, where is the parking from there? Where is the entrance to Town Center? The Urban Lands, you called it a signage problem, but also a road diet problem.
I feel that the real lost opportunity here was that they should have built the Town Center or Town Square on the side that the metro is on.
So you're, you're not wrong.
You are running to be Rockville City Council member. What capacity do you have to bring about this kind of change?
What I do see as a possibility of is a revamp of Rockville Metro Center that makes the entire area more friendly to people leaving or coming onto the metro and the access to and from Rockville Town Square easier. I would love to see the Rockville City Government work on a plan with our county and state elected officials, something that everybody can get on board with.
Step one in that process is to get mayor and council all on one page. And as we talked, the mayor and council is divided.
We're in a sea change election right now. We have an election where mayor, the mayor is not running for reelection. And we have at a minimum five spots on the council, because it's now expanded to six, that are going to be people who have never been elected before.
But you described just recently Mark Proshela as a candidate for, pro-growth candidate of mayor, for mayor. And you described Monique Ashton fundamentally as an anti-growth candidate of a mayor. Monique Ashton heads a slate of other candidates. What is the chance that you will get a different set, a vastly different set of opinions, even if you get fresh faces on the council?
While it's true that Monique Ashton voted against that proposal in 2021, she also today cited the 2019 ULI report. And she said, not only has the mayor and council looked at that, but she wants to follow that.
Okay, so she is not anti-growth anymore?
The answer is, I don't know. Regardless of what's happened in the past, Monique Ashton is now looking towards the future and I'm hopeful towards a kumbaya moment. And if you look at her, the people on her slate, just because she's on a slate or they're on a slate together, doesn't mean they're always going to follow the same opinions. There are numerous members of her slate that I think would follow the 2019 ULI report. Paul Scott, he mentioned the 2019 ULI report in today's forum. Isola Shaw, she wasn't at today's forum, but she's talked about the need for affordable housing and residential growth in downtown Rockville. Now, she's on Monique's slate, but here's now two candidates that might be in favor of that. Kate Fulton is on Monique Ashton's slate. Kate Fulton is a member of the West End Citizens Association and she has actually argued for more residential growth in Rockville Town Center. Melissa Valeri, also on Monique's slate, she lives in Twinbrook. And she has actually not only supported the, the growth of residential density in Twinbrook and Twinbrook Quarter, but she's also talked in different meetings and I've heard her talk to folks about residential density.
If that is indeed the case, that if everyone is supportive of more residential development in Rockville Town Center, how do you differentiate yourself?
I differentiate myself not just on residential density. So there's a number of different things that I, that I differentiate.
You mentioned residential density, you mentioned integration, transportation integration. You mentioned signage as significant problems in Rockville Town Center, Town Square. Is there anything else you believe that is holding it back?
There are other things. One of the things that I think the mayor and council has done improperly, and that's dealing with some of the Small Business Investment Fund. The mayor and council has put over $2 million towards just one business, Dawson's Market. And year after year, they ask for, you know, we just need a little bit more money to get us going. And they've given over $2 million and still today Dawson's Market came back in this most recent budget session and said, we want more money. We're still having trouble. At the same time, they told the mayor and council that they're actually giving money to different charities. We should not be giving money to a business that itself can't support what they're actually trying to sell and give the Sydney money as a subsidy to just one or two businesses.
In the mayor and council, is support for money for Dawson's Market unanimous? Or have some people supported it and others not?
The straw poll that occurred in the, before the final budget hearing was that it was a three to two vote. Beryl Feinberg and David Miles both did not support further funding for Dawson's Market, whereas the other council members did vote. I don't know whether that was the ultimate vote.
Is it your expectation that the new council, whoever it is with you on it or not, is going to reconsider Dawson as a recipient of these kinds of funds?
I, I don't, I don't think so. I can tell you that Monique Ashton and Mark Proshela were very reserved in their approval in- I can tell you that Monique Ashton and Mark Prochela were very reserved in their approval in that straw poll. Mark specifically said, I'm getting frustrated and I think I need to see a plan going forward. And Monique Ashton gave, you know, strong comments that while she was going forward with this, she herself is getting frustrated with the continued money. I believe that if this comes up again in the new council, I'm hopeful that it's finally going to be a line in the sand that said, you know, at this point, the money that we've been giving you for many, many years, we can't keep doing it.
How many jobs does Dawson produce?
I don't know. And I know that the owner did talk about the fact that he's giving jobs to many folks. But just because an entity or a store is, happens to be giving jobs, does not mean that the city taxpayers should be giving hundreds of thousands and now over two million dollars to that entity.
Do you think more generally there should be a city fund to support businesses in the Rockville Town Center, Town Square area?
I believe that the Small Business Investment Fund is an excellent idea. I love the idea of the city supporting small businesses, but I do, I believe it should be opened to all parts of the city. We talk about town center and town center needs help, but we've got empty storefronts in King Farm. We've got other areas of the city such as Tw- Sunflower Bakery in Twinbrook is a wonderful small business. They're doing amazing things, they're being successful. Why isn't a business like that also being given the same opportunities that Dawson's Market have? I think we need to, I do support the city giving and having a fund to support small business innovation and small business success. But when that money is almost exclusively going to one or two companies without the ability for other companies to have a slice of that pie or have the opportunity to get that money, that's where I have the problem.
What is the other company that is getting money?
The answer is I'm not sure.
What other issues do you have? I mean, list them out so that we know what it is.
There are other avenues to get more people into town center other than just residential density. And one example that, that I've, that, that actually I've heard from numerous people is have, we have just a, a, just a short drive away from Rockville Town Center, we've got Montgomery College. Montgomery College is thousands and thousands of people that come there on a daily basis to learn, teach and utilize that campus. They are off, they're primarily a commuter campus. So people are driving there and then either for dinner or lunch going home. We have the opportunity to create a shuttle. We could have the opportunity to create a shuttle and more easily get people from Montgomery College to Rockville Town Center. It was proposed by numerous people and Rockville City Government has said, listen, to do that on our budget is too expensive.
Do you know how much it costs?
No, I don't know the actual funding numbers. The only thing that I was told is that Rockville has rejected the idea because it's too much. But I have yet to hear that there's been any either requests or attempts to get funding assistance from either the federal, sorry, either the state government or the county government for this uh, shuttle. Now, this shuttle is something that's dealing with a university to a major um, cent- economic center. It makes sense that the county or state government might help to contribute to that shuttle, especially when the county government itself is going to be on that shuttle route.
Adam Van Grak, thank you for taking the time. Good luck in the campaign.
No problem.
That was Adam Van Grak for Rockville City Council. You can find more about him at van grak dot org. I'll be back with Isola Shaw. The music you're listening to now comes from Montgomery County vibraphone player Pete Chavette. This song is called Vibin Memphis. Isola Shaw is a communication specialist currently working in the federal government. She has served on Montgomery County's Racial Equity and Social Justice Advisory Committee and on the Rockville City Charter Review Commission. But she is best known for her work on renter advocacy. You can find out more about Isola Shaw at isola, the number four, progress dot org. Isola Shaw, welcome to I Hid Politics.
Hi Sunil, it's great to be here.
You said you wanted to talk about affordable housing in Rockville. Could you please describe the problem as you see it?
Yeah, well, I have uh, knocked on thousands of doors and I um, have heard from a number of community members from young couples who um, are struggling to purchase a home and are living with their parents, their parents who want their kids to have more independence from seniors and retirees on fixed income, struggling to pay uh, property taxes, which is the bottom line for their housing cost. I myself, I'm a renter and I'm one of the only renters in this race and I received a double-digit rent increase. And fortunately, I was able to stay in Rockville, um, but that is not the case for the majority of folks. And also throughout the pandemic, um, I've seen a number of families get evicted and um, it's really heartbreaking to see kids close in a heap on the side of the street. And so we, as a city, need to focus on this issue and address our affordable housing crisis that we're dealing with.
So you said your rent increased and you were able to stay in Rockville. Did you have to change your home?
Yes, I did. I lived in Twinbrook for over a decade. Um, and I loved Twinbrook, I loved the Twinbrook neighborhood. Um, and we had to move, um, luckily we found a place uh, in, in a town center area, which wasn't too far. But um, you know, a number of families are not able to stay in Rockville and they want to stay in Rockville.
That's interesting. So Twinbrook is now more expensive than Rockville Town Center?
Well, the apartment complex uh, that I was at, a number of people received double-digit rent increases. And there are some apartment complexes within the town center area which um, are not fully occupied. And um, there's some availability or wiggle room with rent.
Twinbrook used to be cheaper than Rockville Town Center, but now it's kind of reversed, which is a very interesting phenomenon in, in and of itself.
I think, I think rents are going up everywhere. And um, just based on my particular building, my particular unit, um, but overall, a number, I mean, I, I would walk down the hallway and I would see the yellow eviction notices from, on my neighbor's door, um, door after door in, in this uh, building in Twinbrook.
Now, recently, um, the Montgomery County Council passed a rent stabilization um, law. Do you think that kind of law is appropriate in the city of Rockville?
Absolutely, and it's needed. Um, for the past three years, I actually helped to draft that law. Tenants originally wanted about one point four percent. Landlords, developers wanted about fifteen percent of a rent cap. We compromised on a six percent.
That kind of bill can be passed in Rockville and have, what are you thinking in those terms?
I think the bill can be passed and should be passed and that's in fact, one of the reasons I'm running.
So why do you think the county was able to pass it and Rockville has not been able to pass it?
I think because of the way in which a lot of community members were able to organize. You know, it's very discouraging to find that our current mayor and council did oppose that rent cap. Um, but I do think we need to hear more from community members and what they are experiencing to bring these stories to City Hall so that we can encourage um, leadership to make the right decision.
Is there an organized renters group in the city of Rockville?
Not that I know of. I know there are several tenants that have been very active and working to organize um, a larger, a larger effort. But the organizational level in Rockville is, is not that as it is in the county.
Right, so my question then is if it isn't, then what are the chances that you're going to be able to pass a rent stabilization law in the city of Rockville?
Well, you know, this election will change who the mayor and council will be.
So you're running on a slate with a mayoral candidate, uh, Monique Ashton, who has been part of the old mayor and council, who, which opposed rent stabilization. So what is your expectation that that's going to change?
Well, in order to pass rent stabilization, we will need to have a majority of, of um, the mayor and council.
I imagine. So she opposed the letter to the, from Rockville's mayor and council to uh, the county?
As a body, they did oppose rent stabilization.
Well, then what is your expectation of change?
The expectation of change is actually going through a process where you have community input. We need to have a process in which we, we have tenants at the table and we have landlords at the table and talk about our needs.
Right, so you were the only candidate to bring this up, which says to me that the others are not that interested. So, and you said that you need a majority to pass a bill. How do you expect that to happen?
Well, I think with the, the process of the letter, I think it was more like a, a very short turnaround time in which they wanted to send that letter. And I would redo that process so that more folks understand and know what's going on. Because I think if, if more candidates knew what was going on, they probably would have also shared their views. Um, but there just wasn't enough time. It was, it was actually, I think there was like a, even a twenty-four hour turnaround with that agenda amendment.
Okay, do you think six percent um, rent cap is appropriate for the city of Rockville? Or do you think it should be higher or lower? Where do you think it should be?
Um, I would model the legislation after the, the county.
Let's talk about, you know, the availability, the supply of affordable housing. How do you plan to increase the supply of ra- uh, housing in Rockville?
One way in general, I think that we need to work with more affordable housing developers. Also, I do think to get more affordable housing, we could look at changing some of the requirements of the M P D U program.
How would you like them changed?
So in the county right now, um, if you build um, a building that has more than twenty units, um, a certain percentage will have to be affordable housing. In the city of Rockville, it is fifty units. So that in itself, there's, there lessens the amount of affordable housing that we have. I do think that we do need to change some of our zoning um, for more uh, multifamily units throughout the city of Rockville.
The levers that you have in your hand, which is rent stabilization, M P D U, you know, they end up in, you know, imposing more costs, but you also want more supply. So there is a tension there that I think perhaps you need to address.
Well, one of the ways to address that, Sunil, is in the rent stabilization bill in the county, it exempts any new development for twenty-three years. It's a generation essentially that exempts any new builder who wants to invest in the county.
And you would do the same for the, for the?
Yes, I, I actually think that, that is something that can attract business.
If that is the case, what is the chance that you're actually going to be able to stabilize the rent in the short term?
Well, I mean, that would apply to the current existing renters, right? That in terms of their rent cap and the buil- and the buildings that they're in.
When you ask for zoning change, right? Are you asking for zoning change beyond what is in the comprehensive plan? Or is your ask just mirroring what is in the comprehensive plan?
I do think it is sufficient. However, one thing that does concern me is that um, I don't know if there was enough input and outreach done to going back to renters and tenants. Um, and you know, I, it is a plan to, to guide us and.
So what is the extra that you want beyond the general plan? Where do you want to go beyond the general plan for zoning changes? You know, adding extra housing to town center is already there.
For me, it's more about the process of getting input.
I understand process, but I'm just wondering what it is that you would like to see?
The process leads to an outcome.
What is that outcome?
One of my concerns is, you know, particularly being a renter, is having folks being pushed out, priced out.
You know, you don't want people to be pushed out, but you want more housing, which obviously happens if you rebuild. So there is this tension and it's hard to see what the balance is.
This is why I think rent stabilization, missing middle housing can work hand in hand, where you're working to keep people, keeping housing affordable, um, as well as building new housing.
My expectation was that at the county level, when the rent stabilization was passed, that they would also pass a major zoning change law that would open up huge parts of the county for two new buildings. That was my expectation. What ended up happening was completely something different. The rent stabilization passed, but nothing, there was no movement on the zoning change side. I had thought there would be a brand, a grand bargain, but it wasn't.
I do think the Thrive twenty fifty and having missing middle, I think that sets the groundwork to change the zoning.
But they would have, they should have happened together. With the rent stabilization and the zoning change should have happened together a, as a grand bargain. That was my expectation and I was wrong. I was, it, I was, my expectation was completely blind. I thought exactly like you were saying, that they would address the supply issue and the rent control issue together at, in concert. What ended up happening instead was that the rent stabilization passed, but nothing has been done on the zoning change side. Maybe in the future, Thrive twenty fifty will enable the first stepping stones for that to happen. I doubted very much.
The groundwork being done in Thrive twenty fifty, I, I do believe will change the zoning. Seeing advocates to change the zoning and, and who, and um, in pushing Thrive twenty fifty forward. And also, you know, I think, I, I don't know if this, this legislation would have happened together. I mean, we're talking about two different bodies of the, of the, um, when I, two different bodies of the county council, the, the body that passed Thrive twenty fifty and then there was a different body that passed rent stabilization.
No, it's the same county council that passed.
No, no, I'm talking about the individual county council members. Change in, change in leadership um, leads to, to changes in some of this legislation. You know, although it's not happening together, Sunil, I do think it is, it is happening concurrently.
Isola Shaw, thank you for coming on I Hid Politics. Good luck in the campaign.
Well, thank you so much, Sunil. Um, I, I loved having this conversation.
That's Isola Shaw for Rockville City Council. You can find out more about her at isola, the number four, progress dot org. I'll be back with Paul Scott. I'll be back with Paul Scott. Paul Scott is a senior executive in the federal government and serves on the board of Montgomery County's George B. Thomas Saturday School and the board of King Farm, one of the biggest developments in Rockville. You can find more about him at paulscott, the number four, and the letter U dot com. PaulScott4U.com. Paul Scott, welcome to I Hit Politics.
Thank you.
You're running for the city council in Rockville. You have posited that with growth has come diversity in the city. And that requires the government to be cognizant of varied preferences and interests as a consequence of that diversity.
That's correct.
Can you describe the situation now? Is the city not cognizant currently or is it somewhat deficient in its cognizance?
I wouldn't say that the city is deficient. I, 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 I would say that there's always room for improvement. Um, th- there's always room for reflection. I think that the city is doing our um, a, a, a good job and being purpose in, and leaning into and recognizing um, um, the diversity. Uh, we, we have uh, um, a couple of folks, uh, and I don't know their particular names, I forget their names, in the city government that actually are going out leaning into um, some of the various different organizations, the, the different areas, the fact that the city the um, um, council made a decision to expand the city council, uh, recognizing that there's a need for, for broader representation.
What would you do differently that is not done now?
Um, well, I would look at some of our, our religious organizations. I would look at some of our, our um, uh, some of our other groups that maybe uh, are, 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 are more ethnically based and, and so, and so forth. I, I would-
Like what?
Let's say our, our Asian community. Um, and I know we have s- s- some committees on that. I look at some of our Latino communities.
So what would you do specifically for Asian outreach or Latino outreach?
If there's a, something that's going on, a presentation directly uh, with those entities, those organizations, instead of it's just where you have something on the website or you have something inviting the con- uh, and inviting it. I-
But that's a straw man. The, the city is actually reaching out to those groups already. It's not like they're just leaving things on the website and so, um, what would you, what would you add?
I think that we need to do more of that. That, that's why I think leaning into that a little bit more.
How much more? I mean, you have only that much staff. Do you want more staff?
Well, no, I'm not going to say that we're gonna, because then that has budgetary im- impacts and so forth. So it's not, uh, it's, it's not necessarily um, want more staff, but, but I think it's just, it's just um, 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 a, a, a more of an emphasis on that. I think also when, as far as having more, this, there's been, there's been uh, some discussions. Some people said, hey, uh, the city council is actually going out into some of these communities, actually uh, more of a listening session or, or, or your city council in your particular neighborhood and so forth.
Okay. So you want to take um, council meetings in the different neighborhoods and uh, areas of the city. What else would you do?
I've had a lot of people uh, come to me about bike lanes, dedicated bike lanes. They don't, they're like, okay, what's, why are we doing this? What, what's going on? And what you notice, what I've noticed is that we have a strong, a, 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 a strong advocate community as far as biking and I'm, I'm a biker too and, 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 and other multimodal um, transportation. I sit on the city's transportation and um, mobility commission. So I'm, I'm, I'm a strong proponent of the, of, of, of those changes and, and those adjustments and uh, w- with regards to uh, dedicated bike lanes and so forth. But what I've noticed is that sometimes you're, you're, that, that individual who's your common Joe, your common person, they don't understand it. They don't get it. And, and what happens is that it's just the, the folks that are, the advocates or those folks that are, they, they get it. They're pushing and, and we're doing it. So I think that when we do make-
Do you think the city is adding bike lanes even though most people don't want them?
No, that's not my argument. I, I said, when we do these things, we need to make sure that we communicate um, the rationale for it and the benefit to it so that your common person, your, 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 your person who's not necessarily involved in the advocacy process and all of that stuff can see the benefits that they have. The fact that some of these uh, dedicated bike lanes or um, it can improve pedestrian safety. When we have these things, instead of just meeting with, you know, uh, this advocacy group or that advocacy group, but, but actually reaching out into certain of those communities where um, uh, and having that, that discussion with them regarding wh- where the city is going and, and, and kind of leaning into that a little bit more.
How to target outreach within specific communities outside of existing groups, which is what you said. Existing groups, because they exist, are easy to find. But if you are asking, go into the community without the existing groups, then how do you do the identification of interest? What specifically do you propose?
I've been to a meeting wh- where with um, with, with the uh, bicycle um, advocacy group. And one of the things, when I went to that meeting, one of the things that I said, you know, folks, look who's here. You know, you, you, you don't see a lot of minority groups that are here and-
Advocates are mainly white? Is that what the problem is?
Yes, that many times that is so. And so they even, um, th- th- there was an acknowledgement that, that we do need to make sure that, 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 that there's a broader reach out. Let's say even that the i- issue as far as uh, you know, environmental issues and, 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 and so forth. A lot of times that was just focused on, or you just had a particular niche group that was focused on that. Now people have recognized that environmental racism and, 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 and other things now that affects broader communities and so forth. And, and, and that's something that, that the entire community should be sensitive to and, and focused on.
How does environmental racism manifest in the city of Rockville?
I would look at, let's say, the Lincoln Park area. Um, uh, l- look at um, just a few a- along Stone Street.
What do you think is wrong right now with Lincoln Park and what change would you like to see there?
One of the things that I've always um, uh, been amazed at is, is, is the Unity Bridge. Uh, and if, if you're, if you live in Lincoln Park, um, if you even want to get to a supermarket, um, um, you have to either drive around or you have to go over the Unity Bridge and, and uh, you know, that, that's, you know, that, that Unity Bridge is, are you familiar with it?
Yes. What would you do?
It's not something that's just going to happen overnight. These, these, these challenges and these issues and so forth have, have, have built up over generations and so forth. But what it is, the first thing is a commitment to uh, recognize that there is a challenge.
Do you think the current council and past councils have not recognized the challenge?
I think that they, they have.
And why do you think they have not been able to do anything about it?
Money.
Where will you find the money?
I'm not going to be able to print money and find money, but what it is, is just making sure that, that um, uh, as, as you know, um, everything decisions um, uh, come down to politics and, 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 and folks coming together, recognizing that there's a challenge, recognizing that there is an issue, and then having a step-by-step process. The first step is to recognize that there is an issue, making sure that there is a priority, making sure that there's a commitment.
Do you think that first step has not been made over these last decades of recognizing that Lincoln Park has been left behind?
I did not say that the recognition has not, has not happened. Folks know that there, that's, that's an area that's been uh, uh, neglected and, and, and some resources need to be, to be there. Even looking at code enforcement, uh, walking through the city and uh, uh, looking at um, making sure that there's the same level of code enforcement across the entire city.
So what is the current difference in code enforcement between the areas?
I don't know. I just know that sometimes when I'm walking through, there is a difference when you see wires hanging down uh, um, uh, on a street and, and, and it's, and it's very dangerous and, and, and you're like, how in the world did these wires of the utility company put this up and, 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 and that was allowed to, 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 to stay there and, and you go into other neighbors where you know, uh, that would not be tolerated.
Where is code not enforced and where is code enforced?
I'm sure that, that, that our, our city has a, code enforcement should be done in a certain way now a- across the entire city. So the issue is, is how is that done? Is that done by somebody calling in? Do you have inspectors that are going through?
What is the process?
I, 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 I don't know that process. That's where, where, where the experts would have, would, would look at, um, you know, the algorithms, look at um, 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 what are the metrics, you know, if there's other areas that, that are going through development process and so forth, you know that, that's already going to be up to code. If, and another area that's much older or if there's been some incidents that have occurred and so forth, that's where the expectations that they would be looking at that data, looking and assessing and so forth, where there's a risk and maybe where they need to make some changes or if there's uh, significant community complaints or, or things that, 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 that people are calling in or observations. That's, that's for them to determine that.
You have said that you want to make Rockville more attractive. What would you do to do that?
I, I think that we all, with our businesses, um, being a little bit more affirmative in how we are attracting our businesses, that, that's uh, is sustaining and supporting our business, making sure that even our Rockville Town Square is a place that, that people know that they can uh, go to and, 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 and we want people to come to Rockville Town Square as opposed to going to Rio, going to Pike and Rose.
But how?
I, I don't have uh, the specific answer and the magic wand to say how it's going to occur. The things that I am concerned with though are, is making sure that um, you know, those businesses that we're attracting, uh, what do they need to be successful?
Have you talked to them? What do they need?
I, I don't know. That's something that I'm, I'm, I'm still listening. That's something that I'm still learning. A lot of times if you're driving along 355, you would not even know that there are restaurants and there's, there's the, the, our, our branding, our, 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 our signages. I think that that's something that we can improve on. I think that looking at our, our restaurants and so forth, and I think that was one of the things that was in uh, the ULI report. The Urban Land Institute um, did a study some time ago regarding how uh, we could make some improvements to our Rockville Town Square.
What would you do from those recommendations?
Parking was, was, was a concern.
What is the concern about parking?
Parking is very, very tight.
Do you want more parking at Rockville Town Square?
If we're going to attract and if we're going to draw folks from a regional basis, you know, what does that look like? Is, is it, if it's going to be vehicular traffic, our Rockville Metro Station, is there a connection from our Rockville Metro Station or something that would direct you over to our Rockville Town Square? No. So if, so this is where I'm saying that we have to have some consistency, some really purposeful thought. If we're, if we're going to be limiting the car parking or if we're going to be reducing that, and then there's going to be more of a reliance on our metro stations and we need to make sure our metro stations have some tie-in or, or some sign-
There is a walking path.
Yeah, but that walking path is not the best. There's not even a signage, even at night time when you walk, uh, you know, it, it, it's sometimes the safety issues and so forth, but, but there's no signage. What-
I agree, but Metro owns the station. There's, 355 is owned by the state, right? The city of Rockville has very little in terms of being able to build over the road or under the road. What practically do, are you proposing?
So, so I'm, I am, I am, I am recognizing that there is an issue, acknowledging that there is an issue or, or accepting um, um, uh, those issues that have been stated by some of the experts again, such as the ULI from, from o- o- other parties and so forth. So now that is the goal of, of our city council.
Well, I think the problem is that these problems have, are, have been persistent and, and, and enduring for decades now, right? And different governments have tried to do this and they have not succeeded. So if you are proposing that something needs to be done, the question is, what more do you intend to do that has not been done before?
If our focus is on the, 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 the Rockville Town Center area as far as an area of, of, of economic growth, um, that's a focus, that's a central area, that's something that's going to be critical to uh, Rockville's growth, it's a source of, of revenue. Uh, obviously there's, there's a more development, housing development that's, that's, that's going on there. Um, the, the, the impact on our transportation, um, because that, uh, where that's at, that's something that we, that becomes a priority. That's something that we ask our, our, our city resources to come up with a plan. Uh, we, uh, the city council again is not going to, 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 to have the, the specific technical things. Wh- what I would, what I would want is for those experts um, to, I, I would, I, I would say that the, the mayor and the city council will say, this is a priority issue, this is a priority initiative and, and, and let's have a focused approach. Let's, let's have our technicians, all of our, our consultants, all of our, our, our technical team come together, come up with recommendations. Uh, and, and then once those recommendations and uh, uh, come forth, you would see then how we then execute and move forward. And again, reaching out not only with our, our business community, but also our, our, our other political community, because this is a regional approach. This is where something that we need our, our county council, we need our state delegation. Uh, and, and again, why you need uh, council members that can get, play nice with others and that can represent the interests of the, the city, but also can reach out and adv- and, and, and advocate the interests of the city. Uh, um, uh, so that we can move forward, as you say, to address something that's just been sitting around for such a long time and there has been no movement.
Paul Scott, thank you for coming on I Hit Politics. Good luck in the campaign.
It's been a pleasure.
That was Paul Scott for Rockville City Council. You can find out more about him at paulscott, the number four, U dot com. The music you're listening to now comes from Bethesda singer-songwriter Dara Blacker, who is a 10th grade student in Rockville. This song is called Another Try. I'll be back with Kate Fulton. Kate Fulton is a federal government executive and serves on the board of Rockville's West End Neighborhood Citizens Association, which includes historic Rockville. She is active in the walkability movement in the city and has supported tolling I-270 as a solution to congestion on the highway. You can find more about Kate Fulton at Fulton, the number four, Rockville dot com. Kate Fulton, welcome to I Hit Politics.
Thank you so much. Glad to be here.
You're running for the Rockville City Council and you have said that you want to talk about walkability. Can you describe the problem of walkability in the city of Rockville?
We do not have safe, connected walkways and roadways. We have over 400, by last count, 497 missing sidewalk segments. We have intersections that are universally understood to be unsafe. And by the way, most, many of those sidewalk segments that are not missing are around our Rockville Metro and our schools. Um, it creates an unsafe environment and one that's not equitable or connected.
How many people are struck within the city of Rockville? Uh, whether on Rockville city roads or on county or state roads, um, do you know?
Well, I can tell you that, you know, we had two pedestrian casualties in 2020 alone on Rockville Pike in a 24 hour period. We've had in King Farm, um, a stroller with two young children in it hit. No fatalities likely. So, no, I can't tell you the total number that's occurred over any given period, but there's enough data points to know the problem is real.
Why do you think this problem exists? Why do you think this problem exists?
Number one is the complexity of Rockville not having actual control over many of our most unsafe roads, your state roads or the county roads. That's been a challenge for years. Another part of the problem, all problems, is a prioritization and funding issue. We don't have the right prioritization or the funding to address the problem. A third aspect of the problem is what I'll call resistance to necessary impacts to create the right pedestrian infrastructure.
So you said, Rockville doesn't have control over all the streets that go through Rockville and some belong to the county, some to the state, and this has been a persistent and long-term problem. How can this be solved if it has been a persistent and long-term problem?
I would focus on two ways to address it. One of the ways is sort of grassroots advocacy. What the city can do and has done well in other areas is to work with the community to generate enough support, enough noise and enough momentum that it raises certain issues on the priority level for those jurisdictions that do have control. And mayor and council have a role in making that happen. The second way that we can move that needle is better and more continuous engagement and collaboration with those other jurisdictions. It's not enough to, once a year, send our letter on what we think the priorities should be. It needs to be a consistent engagement pushing and touting Vision Zero as something that we're all accountable for.
So you want grassroots advocacy? You want the mayor and council to organize or trigger this grassroots advocacy? How can this be done?
The city has before done walking tours of the various neighborhoods to point out areas where there are pedestrian safety issues. I've attended several of those. Not a lot of residents did, maybe a handful. I think our communication efforts and our outreach efforts to really reach people that are affected could be exponentially improved. Funding better community engagement and communication is a place we should be investing. The return on that investment, I believe, for the city overall will be well worth it.
There is resistance to necessary impacts of walkability changes. Can you speak to that?
In the abstract, you want whatever is for the greater good, but when the rubber meets the road and you're looking at 18 months of your front yard being torn up, you no longer want that thing. And it's having the big picture, long-term view that is required of the actual jurisdiction in question to balance that appropriately.
Where is the balance in your view?
I am running for a Rockville 20 years from now. That is my stated platform. So I would put that balance further towards ensuring the future and looking for outcomes, if not decades down the road, and bearing whatever the short-term cost is in most instances.
What walkability infrastructure would you like to see? Or is that sort of tied in with housing density?
The baseline is your basic sidewalk. You know, I have a husband who's legally blind who walks everywhere. I have a son who has the same vision impairment, who will eventually be relying on mass transit and his own two feet to get everywhere. Having a sidewalk and not having to cross the road at an unmarked crosswalk to get to the sidewalk is a safety issue. So I'm starting there. You need to be able to get anywhere in Rockville on a sidewalk.
The first year, what are the goals?
Make me a list of all of the sidewalks in order that need to get addressed and why.
Do you have the staffing to do that?
I believe that we have the staffing. If you include as part of our resources for the city, all of our boards and commissions, you've got a really active and very engaged and informed Rockville Pedestrian Advocacy Committee. You've got a Transit and Mobility Committee. So if we wrangle all of the resources, yeah, I think that can get done.
That's interesting. So you want volunteer commissions and boards to step up and do the work normally done by staff?
The input into what the criteria should be, I see them doing that right now.
Well, if they're doing it right now, then that work is done.
The missing step is the making it concrete, right? Putting it down on paper and getting it vetted and approved.
That's right. That volunteers cannot do. The staff, in my view, looking from the outside, is already stretched. And then you're going to come and say, no, rank all the sidewalk needs by importance. And now we need several more people to build the list. I'm not saying that's a bad idea. I just want to know whether you have the wherewithal to do that and how you might, I mean, does that involve like increasing staff?
There is always a trade-off in it. I'm not on the ground that I don't know what it is right now, but I would never attempt to put more work than staff can handle. What I would want to do is prioritize. I would, if there's a trade-off to get that done, I don't know what's on the plate right now. Master plan is almost across the finish line. That's got to free up some bandwidth.
In your view, why have previous mayor and councils not done what you just proposed to do? Because it's important, right? It's, everybody recognizes and speaks about the importance of Vision Zero and pedestrian safety. And yet, clearly in your view, you know, past councils have not done this. Why?
I will not venture to guess what's happened in past councils. What I will tell you is in my experience in life, analysis paralysis is real.
I've heard of the city of Rockville being referred to as a bunch of neighborhoods that are disconnected from each other. And they're disconnected in large part by state roads. It's Rockville Pike or Wiers Mill or Darrenstown. How do you see the next steps? I mean, do you do the low-hanging fruit of sort of connecting the missing sidewalk segments, which is within a neighborhood? Or do you prioritize connecting the neighborhoods themselves?
Great question. I prioritize this way. Start with the basic public safety issue and address the sidewalks that are assessed to be the biggest risk to life. Start there. Then tackle the bigger connection problems and then come back and fill in any other missing gaps would be how I'd go about doing that.
Just to take the Montgomery County Council as an example, they are focused, everybody is for pedestrian safety. I'm sure everybody on the Rockville City Council is for pedestrian safety. I've heard this said a lot. One death is one too many. But in the end, we are not able to avoid the deaths. In the end, what we end up doing is far short of what is possible even, let alone aspirational. So there is this gap. And I'm wondering if you have thought through how you might be able to fight against or overcome that gap?
One of the only places where the city really holds itself accountable or puts a stake in the ground is in the budget process, right? The budget itself forces that prioritization that can be missing. So I would look for annual budgeting processes to really closely reflect what we're agreed upon priorities. You've got to invest in the thing that matters most.
Do you know what the city spends on sidewalks currently?
I don't have that number. I don't. I did, I did notice in the master plan, there was, there's a discussion, the pedestrian master plan, there's a discussion of funding sources. And, you know, some were grants, some were from the speed cameras, some was our CIP projects. So I don't know what the current expenditure is, but I do know that there are a variety of sources out there we can use. I will, I'll also note that in that same section, when I was looking for the accountability and the commitment, in that same section, there's reference to, you know, any plan needs to be flexible enough to accommodate changing or increasing mayor and council priorities. Any plan needs to, we need to address sidewalk issues as opportunities become available. Some of that language I would want to nail down on an annual basis.
About 50 years ago, there was a very influential article that said that the United States has moved from being a porch country, where we had front porches, to being a patio country, which is we have now backyards with elaborate patios. So in fact, fast-moving cars, among other things, pushed us away from the connections we used to have when we had porches. Do you see in Rockville a possibility of rebuilding a porch community?
When people speak about, you know, density and development, they think of two ends of the spectrum, either sort of large expanses of separated, single-family homes or on the other end, massive skyscrapers, like Crystal City type situation. I'm thinking about Amsterdam. I'm thinking about like downtown Frederick. Like we can, we can build that type of, if you'll call it, front porch community.
I don't know about Amsterdam, but the Frederick example is really, really hits home. Frederick went through this massive change that Rockville has not been able to.
I'm not sure. We should, I mean, it is worth looking into because like I love going up there. That's the kind of community feel. We've got the building blocks, right? Like the way our geography is structured, the way we can do it. I'm not sure why we haven't. And I think it's a goal that a lot of people would get behind.
How do you convince the state and the county to make the investment necessary to make Rockville Pike safer?
It's hard to believe that they haven't thought this through, but part of it is showing the, on the one hand, the consequences of not, like the actual failure to follow Vision Zero and the impacts to health and safety should be, should be front and center. But on the other hand, is the potential, right? I think that area has the potential to not only be safe, but be an attraction and to generate revenue and to help the county overall.
You know, when you sell the case, it looks so over-determined. It's win, 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 win. And yet it doesn't get done.
I spent some time in Boston when I was in law school and there's a road there called Commonwealth Avenue that in the time since I went to law school and have been back since, has been entirely redone. It used to be sidewalk, two lanes of car traffic, the T in the middle, two lanes of car traffic sidewalk. That's what it was like when I was there. Recently, I'm back to visit and there is this beautiful bike lane with a separated mass transit lane. There's a green space in the middle and the whole place feels different. There's, it's a, to your point, it feels like a porch culture. And it was a long stretch of a big road. So maybe I'll have to figure out what Boston did.
Kate Fulton, thank you for taking the time. Good luck in the campaign.
Thank you so much for having me. I appreciate it.
That was Kate Fulton for Rockville City Council. You can find more about her at FultonTheNumberFourRockville.com. That's all for this mega episode. There are other candidates who are also running in the Rockville City Council race, but could not find the time to do the interview and few others who we thought were not viable. Don't forget to listen to the accompanying episode with mayoral candidates Monique Ashton and Mark Barshela. I HAD Politics is produced by me, Sunil Das Gupta, and assistant producer Daniel Galio, with support from University of Maryland Baltimore County. I direct UMBC's Political Science Program at the universities at Shady Grove in Montgomery County, where, among other things, we explore and learn about politics, government and society close to home. Music for this episode came from various local artists. And we end with Catherine Messina Payek's band, Collide, singing the song "Over Nashville." If you know anyone who wants to feature their music on the show, please email us at producer@ihippod.org. Rockville elections on November 7th. Mail and ballots are out. Please vote.